Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Sue Exline, and I am the new Planning Commission Liaison. Nice to meet you all. I will ask for a roll. And thank you for your patience. This is my first time. So Commissioner Bondano.
Here.
Commissioner Mounier.
Here.
Commissioner Martinez.
Here.
Commissioner Chu. Chu is absent. Vice Chair Hunter.
Here.
And Chair Radcliffe.
Here. At this point, I'd like to mention that Commissioner Schmidt has resigned from the Commission, and he is taking a seat on our Police Advisory Board. We're very excited for him for that. We will agendize for our next meeting a thank you to him. So because we always want to say thank you for those who have served the city. So that will be an agendized item on our next meeting on May 18. Right now, we will go to minutes. We have no minutes, so we will go on to public comment. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment? Public comment is an area where anything that is not on the agenda may be addressed. If you have a comment, would you raise your hand? And I am not seeing any. Okay, great. Then we will go on to the consent calendar. There's nothing on the consent calendar this evening. So we will go straight into our presentation. I believe we have a staff presentation from Emily Wolfson.
Yes, I failed to introduce the staff here tonight. Chair Radcliffe says I could do that now. Thank you. With us tonight is William Chu, Senior Planner, Emily Wolfson, Associate Planner, Veronica Ramirez, the City Attorney, and Christina Mateo, Administrative Secretary and the Meeting Host. Emily will give the presentation for staff. Thank you.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you to the Chair, to the Planning Commission. Like Sue said, my name is Emily Wolfson, and I'm the Project Planner for 150 Charter. So I'm going to briefly describe the project site, the project description, a summary of entitlements, as well as describe the site and building design. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. So the project site is a flat lot consisting of three parcels located on Charter Street, about approximately 600 feet from El Camino Real. And it would combine three parcels to create a 78,000-square-foot site. It's located in the mixed-use corridor, El Camino Real zoning district. Currently on the site, there's a grocery store and surface parking lot, which is outlined in the red outline here, which would be demolished as part of the project. It's adjacent to the Woodside Central Shopping Center located to the east. And the immediate north are Caltrans railroad tracks. Residents are interspersed throughout with some auto service garages, gas stations, other markets, as well as, as I mentioned, the Woodside Central Shopping Center directly to the east. Next slide, please. So project description. So the applicant proposes to construct a four-story, 72-unit residential building, which includes 11 below-market-rate units at the moderate level, including one two-bedroom and 10 three-bedroom units as affordable. And the project site is four stories or 50 feet in heights. I'm going to be kind of going over how it complies with all the various zoning standards in a bit. But it also has a total of 144 parking spaces for the residential units, including 18 guest parking spaces, which are all located on the ground floor within a shared podium parking structure underneath the residential units. The project also includes residential courtyards of varying width, which is intended to provide areas of open space and recreation for the residents. Next slide, please. So this slide shows the compliance with for-sale affordable units. As I mentioned, this is a for-sale site. There will be 11 affordable units on the site. Just to remind folks, the Affordable Housing Ordinance requires 15% of units to be for sale at moderate income, which this project does comply with. Moderate income is 120% of AMI, and it's required to be sold at the same level, which is 120% of AMI for approximately 30 years. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned briefly, the proposed project complies with all related zoning standards, including parking height, density, and setbacks. I'm happy to answer any questions at the end if folks have specific questions about this. I know there's a lot on the slide, but bottom line is it complies with all zoning standards, including density heights, ground floor height, building length, setbacks, open space parking, bicycle parking, and sidewalk width. Next slide, please. So what, in terms of entitlements, what is being requested? There's five different entitlements. There's the Plan Development Permit, the condo permit, the tentative map, the architectural permit, as well as the Affordable Housing Plan. So briefly, a condo permit and plan development permit allows for individual ownership of the units in compliance with the Muni Code and the proposed intent of the plan development permit. It would require approval of a tentative map as part of Article 3 of the Muni Code subdivision ordinance. And then in terms of the architectural permit, it would require it because it's proposing multifamily residential units. As I mentioned, or as I outlined in my findings, the, to put the permit or set forth in the resolution. But to summarize, I'm going to be talking a little bit about the design in terms of how it complies with the architectural permit in the next few slides. And then, again, I mentioned with the Affordable Housing Plan, the proposed project does plan on having 11 for-sale units, which is the 15% of the affordable housing that is required for our ordinance. Next slide, please. So in terms of the site design, I should mention, just kind of backing up slightly, that the Architectural Advisory Committee reviewed the project on two separate occasions back in September of 2020, and most recently in March 2021. And they recommended approval, and that's why we're here tonight. But in terms of the project design, the project would front Charter Street with pedestrian access and vehicular access through a private driveway on the west side of Charter Street on a shared ingress egress easement on the east side. The intent of the zoning district is to provide opportunities for development that supports transit and facilitating street level and pedestrian activity. The project does this by including 12-foot sidewalk, new street trees, loading area, pedestrian scale lighting, landscaping and bio-retention. I'm sure the applicant is going to kind of walk through some of these design implements as well. But just, that's a brief summary of that. Next slide, please. So in terms of buildings' design, it's designed in a contemporary style and utilizes articulated elevations, varied roof heights, and a mix of materials to break up massing height and scale. And the final design included a mix of bright colors and more subdued colors, which was a request of the Architectural Advisory Committee. Next slide, please. This is a screenshot of the ground floor plan. Parking would be on the ground floor, and then the living area would be on floors 2 through 4. Next slide, please. In terms of open space, the buildings and courtyard design have been redesigned through recommendations through the AAC to provide additional privacy and noise mitigation measures. The south-facing facade was redesigned with the incorporation of a sound barrier and a new arrangement of formal materials. And at the grade level, there's small planting and vine pockets, which will be placed against the building. Next slide, please. So this is just a screenshot of the landscaping, which I mentioned is going to be providing bio-retention and offering nice sightlines in terms of offering, you know, pretty trees and things to look at throughout the ground floor of the site. Next slide, please. So really, this is the meat of the presentation. But just in summary, staff finds that the applicant has adequately complied with their prior findings and proposes that Planning Commission grant approval for the project, given that they comply with the Plan Development Permit, condo permit, architectural permit, tentative map, Affordable Housing Plan, as well as the fact that it's exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. We did prepare a qualified info exemption for that. So that concludes staff presentations. I'm happy to answer any clarifying questions from the Commission at this time.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Wolfson. Are there any clarifying questions from Commissioners? I'm not seeing any hands up, but I don't have everybody in my view. Can I take it that we have no clarifying questions? Great. Then we will move on to the applicant presentation. Do we have an applicant presentation?
Yes, we do. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great.
Last name for me, Franco?
Yes, it's Zaragoza. That's how it looks. Yes. Yeah, I would turn my camera on. I'm sorry that I had to switch rooms, so I don't have one on this computer. But anyways, Emily did a great job doing a brief overview. I have some similar slides, but I'll give you a little more meat to the description of the project and kind of go over some of the more details. So again, my name is Franco Zaragoza. I'm a partner with Leve Design Partners. This project is located at 110 150 Charter Street. It's on the end of Colosac. We have our neighboring sites, the Union Pacific Railway to the north, and we're bound by two edges with the existing Target Store. Next slide, please. We're proposing a four-story structure containing 72 units, 164 parking spaces at grade below our podium. We have a main pedestrian entrance off of Charter Street. On the southern edge of the site, which is the right-hand side of the property on this page, we have a 30-foot-wide egress and ingress easement that we share with our neighbor. On the northern edge, we're providing a new 20-foot-wide public road and an eight-foot-wide sidewalk. The road is a future plan to connect behind the future development of the Target Store, creating a full connection to the West Moreland Avenue on the opposite side of Target. Next slide, please. Our project consists of seven ground floor units facing Charter Street, and we have parking provided behind this, tucked behind the street-facing facade units. We have drive-through access from the north and south areas of the building. Next slide. Landscape will be provided to create a residential scale. As Emily mentioned, there's going to be some nice sightlines. We're also providing a couple bulbouts, which will manage some stormwater management. We're going to have seven privatized entrances to these units at the front. So there are layering and screen effects that we're using landscaping to create the privacy in the buffered zones. Next slide, please. At the podium level, we have a collection of three-story townhome units. It's arranged in a manner of a pedestrian street. We provide intimate residential scale with privatized unit entrances. Next slide. So here's kind of the overview of the landscape plan. We worked with our landscape architect very closely, and also through the AAC process and staff. We feel like we've really enhanced the design over the process of this project. We created some really nice privatized entrances to these units. We have some high-low planters along these walkways. There are privatized entrances, like I mentioned, with patios. So there's added depth for privacy, screened elements for privacy, and the planted for privacy. So we really focused on creating a nice private residential experience. There are some water features placed along some strategic locations. As you know, we do front the railway, so we did incorporate some sound walls along the northern and southern edges of our courts. We placed some water features directly along those elements as well. Next slide, please. So this is just kind of a typical plan of the second level of the townhomes, very similar to the third. They're kind of mixed with master bedrooms, and in some units, we have up to two bedrooms per plan. Next slide, please. The third floor, like I mentioned, is very similar, but you can see that the building is starting to now create some ins and outs. We have some articulation that you'll see in some future slides where we're creating setbacks purposely for exposure to getting into the courts. We do have some decks on the upper floors, so we're stepping back the building, creating sort of a more rhythmed and pedestrian-friendly scale. Next slide. Here's a typical section of our building. This is taken from the east-west direction. This is to show sort of the interaction with the podium level at the courts. We strategically placed angled roofs on the east direction. This allows more solar exposure for the morning hours in the court. And we felt that was an important gesture to kind of maximize the amount of exposure and sun exposure that we get here. Next slide, please. You saw this on previous slides from Emily's presentation. This is the overview of the southeast view on Charter Street. Again, we worked with staff very closely. The AAC process greatly helped us develop this design. The forms and articulations that we've created kind of are reflecting that residential scale of 20 to 25-foot-wide mass elements. We have breaks that recede back to the rear form. And at the base, you can see we have some planted elements that provide additional screening at our ground floor entries. Next slide, please. This is just the opposite edge on Charter Street. Next slide, please. Here's a close-up of our entry, our arrival. We have a formal entry sequence with highlighted forms on both sides. It's sort of a symmetrical experience. We have a decorative gate at the entrance, an overhead arbor with hanging vines, and some sort of cantenary lights that will be also hanging in these elements for a nice experience as you approach the lobby and the entry sequence up to the podium level. Next slide, please. So this is an inner courtyard view. There's a bunch of snippets that I did, and these were studies that we were showing the AAC. So I included them in this presentation. So I'll just kind of quickly run through just so you can kind of get an overview of that experience that we've created at the podium level. This view is looking back at the entry sequence. Next slide. Here's another view, again, showing the entry sequence, but now we're looking more west or northwest. This facade that we're looking at is, it's sort of a repeated facade. So we've created the western-facing facades in this pattern where we have the top floor articulated and set back, and the ground floor is, again, emphasizing those setback private entrances. Next slide, please. So here's the opposite-facing facade in these courts. Again, we angled the top floor to allow for more solar exposure, emphasizing a sort of a two-story building in this case to minimize the presence of a three-story townhome. Next slide, please. This is a similar slide to the previous one. It's just, again, the eastern-facing facade in the rear court. Next slide. Here's another view, looking back. It's sort of the central spine of the court. This is one of the informal areas that we have for turf and sort of an informal seating area. Next slide. Put this together quickly just to kind of do an overview of the material palette. It's kind of a mixture of high-quality materials. We're using cement plaster for the main mass of the building, which is the lighter white forms. And then the articulated forms that are the one- and two-story sort of masses are metal panel and the array of the kind of the three colors that we show here, the light gray, bronze, and kind of the medium blue. We have a laser-cut metal panel that will be used for our railings and decks. And that's kind of just a quick overview of the palette. The next few slides, you can go to the next slide. The next few slides, I'll just run through very quickly. I just put these together just so you can kind of get an overall sense of the elevation and the material palette coming together. So this is the Charter Street elevation. Next slide. This is the southern facade, and it's very similar to the northern facade. Next slide. And then this is just one of the east-facing facades in the court. So just put that together just so you can kind of see the whole composition. Ran through it quickly. I think my time was almost up. So that concludes my presentation. And I'll be available for any questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Zaragoza. Any clarifying questions from the Commission? I am not seeing any hands raised. All right.
Commissioner, Chair Commissioner Martinez has his hand raised.
Okey-dokey. I must have gone by you really fast. Sorry. Mr. Martinez, Commissioner Martinez, question?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just had a quick question. You know, I know this is located near a few different schools, so I was just wondering what the outreach to those schools has looked like.
Is this a question for me or staff? I know there is the typical notification period, but as far as the owner reaching out to the schools, I don't think there's been any additional networking for that.
Thank you, Mr. Zaragoza. I was just curious about that.
Sure.
The other questions from the Commission? All right. Seeing none, we will move on to the public hearing phase. Let's see. So right now, we will open it up to public hearing. This is where the public can make comments. Following a procedural change for public comment in line with city council hearings, we will no longer read written comments into the record. We will take public comment from those joining us through Zoom first. If you've logged into Zoom through your computer, please click the raised hand button. If you had dialed in, please enter star nine now. If you had dialed in, you may begin speaking once you are signaled that your audio has been unmuted. In order to see how many speakers we have from the general public, I ask that everyone who wishes to speak to raise their hand so that we can get some idea. And is... Okay. I am not seeing any raised hands. Is that what you are seeing, Ms. Alexa?
Yeah, no problem. Excellent. Correct. I don't see any raised hands either.
Great. In that case, we will move forward, and we will go on to discussions among the Commissioners. So I'd like to open the meeting up now to discussion. Any comments, Mr. Commissioner Bondano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, I'll start first with staff, and then if we need to go to the applicant, that's fine. So Ms. Exline, thank you for the presentation. My question is, could you just confirm the reasoning and the rationale for explicitly locating the affordable units within the project and their placement?
I would like to ask Emily if you could answer that question.
Um, sure. I might also defer to Franco for this, but my understanding is the intent was to have an onsite requirement for... Onsite is a requirement for the ordinance. So in terms of having it onsite, that's the reasoning. In terms of the location of where they are throughout the property, I don't know, Franco, there's something that you can add to that.
Yeah, sure. I'd be happy to add sort of the reasoning and how we came up with the arrangement. We do a lot of sort of affordable disbursements in pretty much every project that we do. And each, I know each city kind of has different requirements. Me personally, I've actually taken it where I'm looking for a very even distribution throughout the project. I'm actually looking for a distribution that reflects the average unit, the average unit size. So it's not trying to put them in unwanted areas. It's actually just trying to give an even dispersment. And that was the approach here. So the rationale was basically to try and create an accommodation that is reflecting the average unit.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Zaragoza. And if that's the answer I was looking for, so unless Ms. Ramirez has something else to add with her hand up for clarification.
No, Commissioner Bondano, the only thing I was going to mention is that the city actually requires this as well. So I'm happy to hear that Mr. Zaragoza did this on their own, but definitely a requirement of our ordinance as well.
Yeah. Thank you. Again, Mr. Zaragoza, that's exactly what I was looking for. Appreciate you confirming the fact that you're not sort of segregating them into one corner of the project and that they are distributed. And that was fantastic. Could you also just quickly confirm? I know there's a city requirement, but I'd love to have you, hear you confirm that the affordable units will be identical in matters of construction, quality, furnishings and furnishings, such that one walking into a unit would not know or be able to detect any difference?
Yes, confirmed. We're not changing any type of construction for these units. They're going to be built just like the others.
Okay. And explicitly sort of identifying them also allows you and the city to keep the bedrooms, right, the bedrooms, the units that we're looking for. But at any point in time, again, from a construction and a quality perspective, one theoretically could swap out the affordable unit for one of the market rates down the road. And again, a tenant would not know, would not know or care or perceive any difference.
Yes, correct. There would be no difference between the units.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. That's all I have, Madam Chair.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Bondano. Any other comments from Commissioners? I see, am I seeing Vice Chair Hunter?
Yes. Oh, I don't know what just happened to my, I don't know what happened to my background.
I called you, and you just blinked off. I don't know what.
Turned my video on. The background disappeared. Well, anyway. I had just, I had a couple of questions right now. One is, the project is at a lower density than is allowed. This is 40 units per acre, as the staff report points out, and 60 units are allowed. And of course, we'd like to see a lot of units, you know, built. Is the reason for that because these are larger units? This is, I guess this is for Mr. Zaragoza, probably.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. So we worked closely with the, actually, our neighbors and sort of the staff as well. The product that we've designed is a typology of sort of a townhome mix that is sort of needed and wanted in this area. We felt that more of a standard sort of courtyard building with your conventional flats is probably not the best for this typology. We have, like I mentioned, we have Target as our neighbor. We have a railway nearby. So we wanted to create a building that would actually be desirable for people to move in this area. It is kind of a transitional area. So these townhomes are kind of units that are needed, that we've heard actually from our community as well. We've had early conversations with our neighbor Target. So part of the negotiations about different types of building forms and typologies of units were actually started quite early in that design. And we worked with staff as well to kind of come up with the right unit mix and the type of units that we provided.
Okay, great, thank you. Yeah, I, it's, yes, so between the size of the units and the typology, as you call it, this is really what can be, can be fit there, and I definitely appreciate that. The one concern I would have, you know, for people who are going to be residents here is that it really is right next to the train tracks. And I went and looked at it, and it's, you know, there's just a few yards between this and the tracks. And the people who are going to be in the units on that end of it are going to be subject to a lot of noise. You mentioned some noiseproofing and some fountains. But did the Architectural Advisory Committee address the noise issue? And what have you done especially to mitigate noise for the people in those? And I guess that would be the north end, you know, and the units that's going to be right next to the trains.
Definitely, yeah. So this was an item that we actually took very close to heart. We signed up at Acoustical Engineers early on to help us through that conversation. The AAC also addressed it. So it was an opportunity for us to kind of clarify the steps that we made to the, to the building and the design. And actually, through the AAC process, we actually improved and developed some even higher standards than what we were previously doing. We worked with Salter Acoustical Engineer, and they've actually provided a nice summary of building construction type to allow us to create higher STC ratings for these exterior walls. So we will be implementing a different type of construction for these edges and their returned walls as well. We also, as I mentioned, we have incorporated sound walls that are going to be about 20 feet high in the courtyard. So they'll actually be screening the outdoor elements as well. So when you're outside in conjunction with the fountains, you know, we are trying to create this experience where you're not going to always hear the trains. It's going to be kind of a dampened white noise kind of experience. And these walls also have openings, so they're not just straight, you know, completely cladded walls. They're actually openings that are going to have some glazing, which the Acoustical Engineer also gave recommendations as far as what type of infill we need to kind of carry that consistency of acoustical integrity. So we've taken, you know, not only for the, for the unit walls, we're going to be, like I mentioned, improving those exterior walls. We're also going to be improving the sound walls in the exterior and all the glazing associated with it.
Okay, that was a great and comprehensive answer, thank you. Yeah, I really appreciate how seriously you took that. And that was more than I would have imagined, you know, went into your, into the soundproofing here. So that is great. I don't know, it didn't seem like other commissioners had commented. So just my, I have some just brief comments, which is that I'm very happy to support this project. I think it's a high-quality project that's needed. I love the fact that most of the units are three bedrooms and are meant for families. It's fairly rare that we find for-sale units in transit-oriented development, you know, near El Camino and downtown. I think that is a real positive. And I like the, you know, I mean, of course, it's required, but the 11 below-market units, which are interspersed, as Commissioner Bondano pointed out. And actually, the fact that they're moderate-income units sort of helps us in our housing element, because that was, that's one of the types that we're a little behind on in our current arena housing element. So would love to hear other commissioners' perspectives, but I think this is a good project. Also, I don't, also, I did want to thank the AAC. I don't know if any of them are on the phone right now, but, you know, they seem to have really taken a keen eye to this and very detail-oriented. And it seems like they have, in conjunction with the developer, has made this a quite a good project. So thank you all.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Hunter. Commissioner Martinez, you have a question?
Just comments, Madam Chair. I wanted to just build on some of the comments that Vice Chair Hunter had shared. You know, I was really happy to see just the collaborative spirit between the Architectural Advisory Committee and the developer. You know, I think the changes that were reflected just made for a really beautiful building. And it was exciting to see the green space, community green space that's being proposed, especially just because there aren't any parks within a walking radius. I did a quick search, and it seems like the only option there is to cross El Camino and walk a few blocks to get to the next public park. So it was good to see that. And the, you know, prospect of homeownership, I thought, was really exciting. You know, allowing folks to have some sense of housing security, you know, would be incredible, especially for folks who, you know, can't normally compete in the current housing market. So I thought that was great to see. And the range of entities, I think, will also provide, you know, a critical opportunity just for working families that might risk, you know, overcrowding just to afford their home and, you know, new families that are looking to set down some roots. So, you know, I just thought, overall, it was a smart use of the space. And, you know, I'm looking forward to hearing what the rest of my colleagues think. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Great, thank you, Commissioner Martinez. Any other commissioner comments? Seeing no other, Commissioner Bondano?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I clearly am very much in support of this project, this application. I appreciate the homeownership, the affordability, and at that level. So I don't want to repeat what's already been said. I want to thank the applicant for working through the process with the Architectural Advisory Committee, as also was stated. So time well spent, in my opinion. So thank you for going through that and producing a product that, if there are no other comments from commissioners, I would like to offer a motion.
Well, I will make a few comments, and then I'll come back to you for a motion, how's that? I just want to echo what my fellow commissioners have said, and I really appreciate, this would be so easy for you to make all these buildings very, very symmetrical, very rectangle. You've given a lot of different elements to all the frontages, which really helps in the design. It makes it much more attractive. And thrilled that there are so many three-bedroom units. This is absolutely something that we desperately need, especially in ownership housing. So I'm thrilled that you, Mr. Zaragoza, that you did so many three-bedroom units, and there is not a single studio in this project, which thrills me to death. So having said that, I will turn it back over to Commissioner Bondano.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I would like to make a motion that we adopt the resolution presented in our staff report, approving the project based on compliance with zoning standards and required findings subject to the conditions of approval and upon a determination that the proposed project is exempt from CEQA under the Guideline Section 15332 for infill development projects.
Thank you, Commissioner Bondano. Do I have a second?
Second.
Was that you, Mr. Martinez, Commissioner Martinez? I wasn't sure who.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great, sorry. It's so hard when I can't see all you guys. Super, so I have a motion and a second. Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Okay. So just want a quick clarification. Do I call for all of the commissioners, the ones who also made the motions?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Commissioner Bondano?
Yes.
Commissioner Martinez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt is no longer here, and Commissioner Munier?
Yes.
Commissioner Schu is absent. Commissioner Hunter?
Yes.
And Chair Radcliffe?
Yes. Great. Our motion carries. We have approved 150 Charter Street. Now we will move on to consent calendar. We have no items, oops, I don't mean, I'm sorry, matters of commission interest. So are there any commissioner announcements? Otherwise, I'll go straight to staff. Seeing none, I will go to, straight to Ms. X-line?
So I just wanted to mention some upcoming agenda items. At your May 18th planning commission hearing, you have three items scheduled. The residential design guidelines. There will be an update on the housing element, and there will be time to recognize Commissioner Schmidt. On June 1st, there will be HRAC appointments, and this will be an early start time and two projects, 935 Gilston Road and 2603 Broadway.
Great. So we'll be starting the meeting at 6:00 with interviews, is that what I'm hearing?
That's correct.
Okay, good to note, super.
And also, not on this slide, but just a quick update on some recent city council agenda items that might be of interest to the commission?
Please.
There was, the city council had a second reading on the childcare and miscellaneous zoning amendments on April 12th, 2021, which this planning commission recommended on December 1st of 2020. The city council had a study session on the regional housing needs analysis, housing element, environmental justice element, and the safety element on April 26th. And you will hear that same presentation on May 18th. It's all combined into the housing element update that we mentioned here.
Great.
And finally, the accessory dwelling units was reintroduced for a first reading on April 12th, 2021.
Super, great, thank you very much. Well, that concludes our agenda items for the evening. So I will adjourn the meeting until May 18th. Great to see everyone.
Thank you.